Will it be inviting the applicant to or his or her representative to present the application? Then there will be a period of time for board members to ask questions that board members have of the applicant. After that, we will invite members of the public to comment to the extent they want to by raising their hand quote unquote in the bar at the bottom of the screen. And having the chair recognize them. We're also assisted today, of course, by Carolyn Mish, the from the Office of Planning and Sustainability as the staff person. And I think Carolyn will be assisting with recognizing the people who would like to comment on the application. Once the public comment is over and by and we asked that the comments be addressed. It's a little weird to say this when we're all virtual, but addressed to the board. Not to the applicant. It makes more sense when we're all in the same room, but we like the questions to be directed and comments to be directed to the board. And then the board has the opportunity to ask further questions to of the applicant. Once the public comment period is over, the board typically will vote to close the hearing unless there's a continuation. And at that point, the public hearing is over and the chat box and raise hand functions will be turned off. After that point, after that vote of the board is taken, the board is not able to receive any more testimony or evidence from the applicant or the public. And then depending on what happens between now and then, the board may or may not move to vote on the matter before us. Before I start, we always ask if there's any member of the public here for the purpose of addressing comments to the board that do not relate to the one application on the agenda today. And just for the record, that application is the appeal of the building commissioner's decision by Pat Melnick, senior trustee of the Beaverbrook nominee trust and Ral and Farah Mata. That decision of the building commissioner found that up a certain lot is not a building lot at the end of Grove Avenue. The tax ID a number of that lot is five dash 12. But before we get to that, the question is, is there any member of the public here? Who would like to address the board with comments that do not relate to that one item on our agenda? And I guess Carolyn, I'll ask if you see anyone raising their hands for comments that are unrelated to today's item, just general public comment.
I don't see any.
Okay, seeing none. We will go ahead, I think. And let me make sure I haven't missed anything else that I should have said. I think that covers things unless anyone else can think of anything else that I did not mention. So if not, we'll go ahead and hear the presentation by the applicant or in this case his representative on the matter that's before us. And once again, that is the appeal of the building commissioner's decision that I just referenced a moment again. And again, for the record, the notice of this hearing is published on May 13th and May 20th, 2021. So we'll ask the applicant or the representative of the applicant to present to the board, please.
Hello to the board. Attorney Salowski and I represent the applicant and Pat Melnick, senior as trustee of the Beaverbrook nominee trust. Can everybody hear me? All right?
Yes, I think so.
All right, great. So we'll get started as you guys are aware. And I just want to double check with Carolyn. I had sent an email over with some attachments, just to be sure everybody had those. Have has the board been able to get those? So that is I can relate to things that we can look at them all together. So the it sounds like everybody does have those. So the lot.
Excuse me, attorneys, I just want to make sure Carolyn will be able to show those on screen sharing to members of the public who are present who have not had may not have had an opportunity to see those attachments.
I can make Attorney Salowski co-host for the purposes of sharing. So which I will do that now.
I'm not sure if I can do that. I just printed them out. I could show people if I don't know.
You can't come to a zoom without sharing your screen, buddy.
I don't know how that works actually, but in any event, when we get there, if people have questions and they want to look at things, I guess we can deal with them. So.
I can. So in that case, since he's unable to do that, I can.
You can try and I can try. I can try it.
Well, I can go ahead and I will pull up the folder that has them in them, but it'll take me a couple of minutes. So I just need to go grab that folder and and I'm sorry. Get them on my screen. But go ahead.
All right. So in any event, the lot we're here to deal with is a lot that's down towards the end of where Grove Ave is currently built out on the on the left side as you're looking to maps. It would be on the western side of Grove Ave and Mr. And Ms. Mata wants to build a home on this lot and it's a lot similar size. And to the other lots in the area is along Grove Ave. And Grove Ave in this section was originally laid out as Washington Heights, and I don't know if anybody can see it. But I'll hold this up for a moment. And this map is a recorded map. If everybody's able to look in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds, it's Plan Book 32, page 38. This was laid out and recorded prior to the current zoning requirements in this laid out Grove Ave as a street in North Hampton. And this Grove Ave goes beyond where yeah, oh, there we are now. And so this street goes beyond where currently there are houses located, but where there are currently lots. And this lot is one of those areas on that map in question and.
Which lot is the one?
So I believe it's a combination, actually, but the street is so it would be on the north side. You see where along where it says the railroad. So I think it's actually a couple of these lots put together. And I believe it may be one, two, and potentially three. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I've been focusing on Grove Ave itself, actually. And that's kind of the the issue in question is whether or not Grove Ave is is a legal street that provides legal access and and this unquestionably goes well beyond the current the law in question of oh, five dash zero, one, two. And we've actually.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I really want to get my bearings on this because I've been up to the area. I've looked at it and I'm just confused now. I thought we were looking at the west side of Grove Ave and now you're talking about the north side and.
I'm sorry. Did I say north? I meant the top.
Okay.
So the.
So that's the east side. Is that not the east side?
No, the top of this map would be the would be the west side. And I'm sorry, I misspoke if I said north. I meant.
Okay, so you're you're in the far right corner where it says 52 on the top. Is that right?
No, I think we're in underneath where it says railroad.
You're talking about lots one and two?
Yeah, I think we're in that area of this map and they don't exactly line up to exactly what's on the ground now as some of these lots were combined in various different forms. But essentially that shows the continuation of Grove Ave, which is the the important part of of this and that this was a recorded plan in the in the registry of deeds prior to any current the current rules and regulations regarding.
Again, I know you're trying to just say Grove Ave is longer than it appears to be right now, but I need to get oriented to where you're talking about. I had been under the the last house I saw on the left as I went down Grove and it dead ended was number 88. Are you talking beyond 88 on that same side or across from 88?
Beyond 88 on that same side, it would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight listed. So it's beyond the current houses that's there.
What?
So you're saying 88 is approximately here where my cursor is?
Yes, that's my understanding.
So all those lots to the right of where Carolyn's got her little thing.
Yes, that's currently 12, 31, and 11.
You're arguing those are buildable lots because Grove Ave on this map in whatever year this was in 1908 showed those as lots and showed Grove Ave that long. Am I getting this correct? Okay.
Yeah. So it showed Grove Ave that long. So that established Grove Ave as a legal street in that length. And essentially, even though it may not have been built out at that time, it established that that was a legal lot. And now these lots on the on the top, one through eight are now on the on the tax maps. Map zero, five, 11, 31, and 12. So zero, five, 11, zero, five, 31, and zero, five, 12.
And now today, those about the bike path, correct?
They about the yeah, the the bike path, I guess. Well, I think they call it the multi-use trail.
I call it the bike path. It's shorter.
Okay, the bike path.
We're taught, we're at least saying, talking about the same thing.
Yes. So that's currently commonly known as the bike path.
Thank you. Okay, go on. Sorry, I kept interrupting. I just have a really hard time getting oriented to all of the locations of all.
No, you get ready to you go right ahead and ask any questions that you've got to ask regarding that or any other questions you've got. So I've also got an exhibit B, which is a little bit wordy. It's it's a my exhibit B is actually a legal case that's dealing with this issue where some people may say, well, what does a street from 1948 have to do with now? Well, this this case is is a appeals court case and it establishes that once this street is laid out and people have rights along it, people own these lots and things like that, even though the street hasn't been built out, the town can't just unilaterally say, no, we're not going to acknowledge this street anymore, and we're going to deny your permit. And very analogous to this situation, in this case, that's attached as exhibit B, the the building department denied a building permit. The ZBA in this case actually upheld that denial. However, the Superior Court in this case overturned that denial and said, no, because there was this paper street, because they had frontage on this paper street, you can't deny them that. It was actually appealed to the appeals court where the appeals court actually upheld that decision and the appeals court said, that's correct. Because this paper street was there because there was this frontage on this paper street, it now legally the town can't just decide that we don't want to do that anymore. The it is legal thing that's there and they have that right. And and this this case goes to that, and it is a little bit hard to understand for some that aren't attorneys and it's, you know, it's wordy and frankly, a little bit confusing, but that is what that says. And that's something that the the appeals court of Massachusetts had previously decided that these rights are protected in a case such as this.
Even though, even though the paper street from 1908 or whenever it was was never, at least the stretch we're talking about that fronts on the locus in question was never either built out as a road in the conventional sense with all the requirements of a municipality for safety and otherwise for such a road. And even though the even though the the, you know, there's nothing other than a bike path. Under that theory, couldn't anyone with land on a paper street that has no actual road on it say, here's my frontage, building commissioner?
I mean, I think that is kind of the purpose of a paper street, and they did actually address the fact that it was not built out in this case. And they said, that's not a reason for this denial. And even if they want to take this where the plaintiff was content to abide by the town's regulations as to construction of ways his rights as to this law should not depend on the timing and construction of the way. So if there are some minor things that need to be done, that doesn't necessarily mean that they can deny that permit. Now, we feel that based on what's currently there, especially and if people have visited and this is shown on you know, just looking frankly at at the picture, you can drive right up to the slot. You get in your car and anybody can go drive right up to it. The legal right to drive up to it. And I know everybody says, well, it's a bike path. However, that bike path was was given to the city and in that gift to the city and easement specifically retained was the right to use it for vehicular access and utilities and all these things for for the public purpose, for not public purpose, but for the private purpose of these homes to use for a single family home construction. And that's right was specifically retained. So even though the general public has a right of access as bicycles, the owners of this property had retained an easement retained as part of giving that easement, the right to to access through that lot. And that is.
That strikes that strikes me as a little circular, though, when in reading this easement, it says he reserves the right to use the easement for all purposes for which a right of way may be used. So I think I think it would have to be determined that the right of way could be used for for that.
I don't think so. So basically with this easement, they gave to the to the city certain rights, but reserved all those other rights. So they retained all those other rights in in themselves in giving this. So they specifically reserved those rights and did not give away the right to the city to restrict vehicle access. So specifically, the city does not have the legal right to restrict vehicle access to this parcel. The the city has obtained an easement for for use as a multi-trail, multi-use trail. What commonly you guys would say is the bike path, but the the owners have all the other rights in that.
So is that part of the development plan for this lot to turn that stretch of the bike trail into a road?
Well, I think just the and if you look at the original sec the original section was currently there, there's about 20 or 25 feet, which is the same width as the road. And I think the the idea is essentially just to have the driveway to this this home that would be allowed there to be right on that last section, which is already the same width as the road. And that could be seen on there's a plan for Beaverbrook. And if, excuse me, what exhibit that is exhibit D?
Yeah, that'll make it easier to look at.
Exhibit D, it's fairly, you know, it's fairly small, but if people zoom in, they can see it is shown on there that the road itself is a certain width and it does continue that same width onto this property, which is what people would say is the bike path. Past that point, it does get narrower. But um, you know, we don't think any any real construction needs to be done besides having the driveway that to this property go there. And it's really essentially the same as the rest of Grove Ave.
So on exhibit E, again, our lot is which is it number 12?
Yes, we're 12. So exhibit E is a prior a prior granted. Yeah, I'm sideways here on E. So E was.
This is exhibit D. Did you?
Are we talking D or E right now?
I have D, but I thought I heard you say D. So which one?
I thought I heard. I thought I heard David say E.
Are we doing D? I'm sorry. D isn't David.
D, yes, D isn't dog.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay.
He isn't dog or David.
Okay.
If if we zoom in there on Grove Ave, we can see it is shown where the where the current asphalt is, and it does show the the width of it Grove Ave generally with the asphalt. And that continues for about 20, 25 feet additionally onto what would be in front of this lot. And at the same width as the current Grove Ave for the rest of the length.
Carolyn, can you put your cursor over where?
I'd say it's right in the middle is essentially. Yeah, right there, right in the middle.
So I just want to correct that this is not the width of Grove ends. Actually, before the property line, it ends about right here because this was never built. This map that's in front of you was an earlier plan of where the bike path was going to be, where Grove was going to be extended. So this doesn't exist, this block here. So the actual street ends right here.
And where is that house number 88 in relation?
Right here.
Okay. And and the garages too, it's left as we're looking at it. Okay.
I think from what I understand and actually from exhibit F, it is wider and that does show on exhibit F, you can just see a little corner of it's actually a picture. I don't know how that's going to come out on your end if it'll come out in color, but you can see how it is wider in one section. And that shows the public notice hearing placard on the on the property itself. It does show you the different widths.
So that wasn't formally created as part of the street. The street's only been accepted to this point. And then there's right of way beyond that. This may be some just leftover stationing area for the from the construction of the bike path. But it certainly hasn't been improved to the standard of a street.
Right. Plus, it doesn't stay that with up until the bike path. It 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 in front of 88, it there's it's almost like a cul-de-sac. And then it narrows to 10 feet. Then there's this little tiny little space that bumps out a tiny bit, and then it goes into the bike path, the 10 feet. So yeah, that that's correct from what I saw today. It ends there.
But even if it ends there, what I'm hearing is that the terms of this easement, which is exhibit C, that was that were accepted by the city of North Hampton. I'm not making an argument here. I'm just think talking, describing out loud what I think I'm looking at. Is that at the time that the owner of this land granted this, what sort of became the rail trail to the city, the owner of the land reserved the right to an easement over that same strip of land for any purposes for which a road could be used, including which means the question is, does that mean that it doesn't matter what the width of the pavement is now, it doesn't even matter how far the publicly accepted road for Grove Street is Grove Avenue. It's because the applicant or the appellant is the successor to this party. I guess maybe it's the same entity. It's a trust, the Beaverbrook nominee trust that so the appellant reserved the rights at the time this strip of land was transferred to the city to basically put in a roadway. I
Essentially, yes. You know, the reserve.
Is that nothing else matters? Because they reserve the rights to to make this a roadway to provide access and drainage utilities, et cetera, to install any other utilities that may be used in connection with single family homes. That that's that's what you're saying.
Yes, that is essentially my first argument. We've got the we've got the right to do this. And the the city accepted this easement, the city accepted those terms when it accepted that easement. Now, the city's got the right to use this as a bike path. We have the right to use this as a road.
Carolyn.
Driveway.
So I guess so I guess there are two things. One is the, of course, in any easement, you can grant yourself exceptions to access property. So there's nothing that the city would do at the time to say, no, you can't continue to allow yourself access to the property. And it certainly didn't grant compliance with the zoning for a lot frontage or access. And then finally, the edge, the the road ends 37 feet before this easement starts. So there's still a section of right of access that is not, it's unimproved access for the purposes of creating frontage. If you even get to the point that we allow frontage off of the end of a street, I understand that the applicants arguing that they have that a paper street provides them frontage, but in fact, this lot has been chopped up so many times that that original layout doesn't exist anymore. The planning board also approved an A and R prior to this showing frontage only from Haydenville Road for all of this land here, which was in my staff memo, and I can show that. So that paper street essentially, if it was there in 1908, the subdivision road was actually created to this end. And so and then there's been many carve ups of the remaining lot since then. So it's, I don't think it's a clear path to say that you're going to use a 1908 plan that's still valid in 2021, when all these other changes have been made and the street has been accepted up to this point.
I think the courts have disagreed with that. And I think the courts were clear in that case that I cited that, you know, essentially the courts say that that paper street, even though, and I think it was 1948. But even though that was in 1948, that's still is valid today. It's a recorded legal document that says this is this is what it is. And after that, the cities and towns had more regulations on whether or not streets would be accepted because I guess they, you know, zoning, obviously in 1940s was not what it is now. And but if something was done, you were grandfathered in and you were protected and your rights were protected in those streets and those paper streets. And and this lot is one of those.
And that's a necessary part of your argument, I'm asking, because it's not enough to say you've reserved easement rights because Carolyn, I don't think that you can claim frontage that necessary to satisfy the ordinance and the dimensional requirements for a building lot, you can't claim frontage on an easement based on an easement, a frontage on an easement area. So is, does that mean that this second prong of your argument that, well, it's not just frontage on an easement area, which did give us the right or you the right to install an accessway or roadway or use it for all purposes for which a roadway may be used. But because and frontage on an easement is not enough, you also, or you're asking us to also find that this paper street from 1948 causes that strip of access land to rise to the level of a of a of a public way so that the frontage requirement is satisfied in that way? Do you are you? Do you think that? Let me ask you this. Do you think that let's forget about the paper street for a minute. Do you think that having frontage on an easement area satisfies versus frontage on an actual accepted public way satisfies the requirements for frontage to make a building lot build a lot buildable?
So I think I'll take that question and give you not exactly a straight answer in that if it were a private easement, no, I don't think the private easement would give them that right. However, in addition to all those arguments, this is a public way. The easement has been accepted by North Hampton as a public way. And now they've accepted it as a public way as a bike path or multi-use trail, but that is a public way that the city of North Hampton has accepted in addition. So we've got my argument is actually not necessarily numerous prongs, but it's in numerous ways. Depending on which way the board views things, I think we've got the right to build on this lot for numerous reasons, whether or not they accept the fact that this was a public a public way, which I think it was, and it was a paper street and it was accepted, even if that were not the case. And it now it's a bike path. It's a public way that has now been accepted by the city of North Hampton. And the right to access this by vehicle were reserved to the the grantors in that easement. So if there wasn't a street there originally, which we say there was, and we say that that was there, even if that was just land and the city of North Hampton said, we will accept this land as a public way. Public has the right to go across this way for purposes of an easement of for for a bike path. The the grantor reserve the right to access it for more than those reasons, even though it is public for many reasons. It's it's public. It's public way.
So you're saying on the one hand, if it were a private easement, no, that doesn't every, we all. So you're saying, on the one hand, if it were a private easement, no, that does, every, we all agree, that does not constitute frontage for these purposes. But you're saying because an easement was granted to the city for what is now the bike path, that makes it also a quote unquote, public way?
Yeah, I I think there's no question that an easement, a public easement is a public way.
Well, that's the question. What what is for for purposes of the zoning ordinance? And I I'm sure we can look it up. The definition of a public way, is it satisfied merely by virtue of the grant of private property to the town for a right of way? Or is, in my mind, a public way was always a street that has been accepted pursuant to the statutory process to accept this, to accept a street. But I don't know if Carolyn has any any insight on that, but.
Yeah, I I guess a couple of questions. I mean, we have an easement for the public to access for bicycle.
But is, but is that a leap to saying that makes this a public way for purposes of frontage?
No, the city has not accepted this as a way for a way on which frontage can be obtained. So I can read the three standards from the zoning for what constitutes frontage. But I also, before I do that, I just want to understand the plan you showed recorded at the registry, I see a date of nineteen oh eight on it, and it doesn't, it's not clear that this has been accepted as a paper street. It may have been platted without intention, but in nineteen thirty-four, the city accepted Grove Avenue up to the point where it is now paved. So I don't know that even if you plat a paper street, the city has actually accepted that as the public way, even if it's unimproved. But so think about that. But here is the definition from the zoning for frontage is the uninterrupted length of a front lot line is defined whether straight or not, which conforms to the minimum lot frontage required and is on either a a public way or a way which the city clerk certifies is maintained and used as a public way for the purposes of street access. A way shown on a previously approved subdivision plan, which has been constructed to the standards required when subdivision approval was granted. Or a way that predates subdivision control that has, in the planning board's opinion, suitable width grades and construction adequate and reasonable for vehicular traffic, including emergency vehicles, snow removal vehicles and installation of utilities. So let's say that the, you know, so I think the first question is whether or not that's even been accepted, because we know it's been accepted from previous court cases and a this Board of Survey vote in the thirties up to basically eighty-eight Grove, that area. And the rest of it is unimproved. So even if there was an argument that there may have been a way that predates the subdivision control, it's not been determined by the planning board to be adequate as meeting the standard for frontage.
My my North Hampton Planning Board.
So Attorney Sizlovski, is that something that you can, that you dispute that?
I I mean, I dispute that it's not a public way. I I mean, I think.
No, no, about, no, 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 we're just talking about whether or not it was accepted.
No, I mean, I think it was accepted. This this plan was was recorded. It was prior to the subdivision control. And and I think this is, this street is.
What constitutes acceptance, Carolyn?
The the city takes a vote to accept a way as a public way for the purposes of you know, maintenance, frontage and all of those other items. You Nate, you mentioned in nineteen forty-eight map, I don't see that on this map.
Maybe I was reading that wrong.
So is it?
Cause the subdivision subdivision control came into effect in nineteen forty-five, I believe. So
I I think I was, it was small. I think I was misreading.
So.
Well, it says it was accepted for recording in nineteen forty-eight, but the date on the plan is nineteen oh eight. I think that's the discrepancy.
Oh, that could be.
But anyway, I'm sorry, Elizabeth.
But accepting for recording doesn't mean it's accepted by the city, right? Okay, so, so in that process that Carolyn just described, was there anything that you have going back to nineteen oh eight showing that that's a process the city engaged in to accept it? Not just recording it, which is what you've already said, but.
I I I don't think that that wasn't the process at that time. And that's where this this court case that I've cited, it gets into that, whereas that paper street as the process of has changed, the legal process for accepting streets has changed. Old streets are still legal, even if they were just paper streets, even if a new current street has not been accepted and everybody drives down it all every day. It's possible. There are streets that people drive down every day, which have not been accepted. They were old streets and they're legal.
But we seem to have that. And and I I have to admit that it was just a sort of a cursory review of that case, because there was a lot that you attached, but was, was there, we seem to have a superseding vote on the part of the city. I forget what year Carolyn just said, nineteen thirty-four, to accept the road up to a certain point, which is much much before what you're you're suggesting from the Washington Heights map. Is there anything in that case that talks about that superseding acceptance process and how that affects the prior paper map?
I mean, I don't think that the city accepting something else means that this is not not legitimate.
I'm not sure that I would necessarily agree with you on that, sir, because if there is a codified process for how you accept a a street and the city has engaged in that process in accordance with the process, then I I'm not sure that I would necessarily think that the the case would suggest that that's that can be outweighed by just the recording and earlier recording.
I I mean, I don't think this case exactly goes to that point, but I think the city accepting you know, street over in this location, I don't see how that affects street over in this location. Whether or not what they did on another portion of the street, they didn't address this portion. And and I think unless there's some record which I'm unaware of, there they specifically.
Well, I have to assume they are, they, when they went through the process of accepting the street up until a certain point, they were aware of the map of which you speak. I I I wasn't there. We, none of us.
I I wasn't there.
So, but I I'd have to assume that especially given how much closer in time they were when they went through this process to the actual map itself than we are now, that they had to have been aware of it. They wouldn't have. I I don't know. I mean, I I'm just speculating, of course, but I I have to assume that this information was in front of them.
You know, I can't say what was, you know, what was or not.
None of us can. You're right. You're right. None of us can. But.
So, um, but.
I would like to think of the city as thorough in this process in in looking at, you know, why, why did they choose this point? So anyway, proceed. I'm sorry, I just.
Hang on to that, Elizabeth. May I?
Sure.
Thank you. So there's the first thing I'm reminded of is a a building lot, a similar discussion for a building lot on the north side of Florence that was using the end width of a dead end paper street as their frontage. Within the last ten years, Carolyn, you recall that one?
Are you talking about Dewey Court? You're not talking, that's not Florence.
No. Uh, you get at it.
Garfield?
No. Uh, well, it's, uh, it's it's similar. It's in that little nook on the side of Strawberry Hill, west side Strawberry Hill. You can see the lot, but you're coming at it. Oh, I can, I'll have to pull up a map. But in any case.
Sorry.
There was a similar situation where someone said, you know, this is a building lot and our access is the fifty-foot width at the end of this dead end street.
Were you, oh, you're talking about Hillcrest.
Ah, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
So so it seemed like there was, there were two things going on there. One of them was that that they were told that the the width at the end of the road couldn't be used as frontage, which we have a similar thing here. And the other piece is that it's, it's certainly interesting for me to look back at maps that somebody drew in nineteen oh eight, chopping things up into lots of tiny, tiny lots. What I think is more pertinent here is the more recent subdivision approval that shows the current property line for this map five lot twelve, which is a funky shape where lot twelve plainly owns what used to be part of the paper street. In fact.
Which exhibit are you looking at?
Uh, let's look at I'm pulling that up, D. Exhibit D, the plan of Beaver Brook. So the, this being a subdivision approval plan, uh, it was an A and R plan, excuse me, which was very much tied into lots of conservation easements and interesting negotiations. But I'm looking at what is lot twelve remaining land of Patrick J. Melnick trustee, et cetera. There's also a couple lots, perhaps former building lots immediately north of that, one by Joseph Eli Boisvert and Bernard Prozinski, um, which plainly, maybe they were on a paper street before, but that what was paper street is now owned by lot twelve, Patrick J. Melnick trustee of Beaver Brook nominee trust. Looking, looking at this lot twelve, it's this funky shape, correct?
Yes. So the lot twelve is essentially a square, but it also owns the fee interest under which the the easement and the bike path are on and the easement for the access. So while it does own that, that is, there's an easement across that. So essentially, it really is just the square on the side that's similar in shape to.
It's not surveyed as a separate lot. This is a subdivision of, this is, this is a plan, a surveyed plan of a lot of a funky shape, right?
Essentially, it's a funky shape. Yeah. So.
Yeah. And whether, whether or not there's an easement to cross it, it, to me, the argument goes to whether or not it has frontage at that whatever fifty-foot width or whatever that width is. Can't see the scale exactly at the end of the functioning Grove Avenue.
So it does have act fifty feet at that point, and that is, I think, my, one of my last points in this, even if all these other things are you know, e- even if the board looks at all these other things and isn't sure, there is a fifty feet across there as that's kind of our 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 last position.
Put your cursor over where the references now to that fifty feet.
Right there. Yeah.
Wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on my own because I wasn't able to see that. Do it again.
Uh, well, I'll zoom in. It's right here. So actually, I'll just highlight it right there.
That's a good idea.
So it was laid out fifty feet wide. So it's, there's fifty feet there.
Wait, 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 that's parallel to the street?
No.
Uh, perpendicular this way. So.
How about a line instead of a blue square?
That's not fifty feet there. That's just the width of the road, right?
Which is fifth, laid out fifty feet.
Right. It's not improved as fifty feet, which we require improved front to to count as frontage. It's only about twenty-three feet wide, but the right of way here is about fifty feet where this red line is. Does everybody see this red line?
Yes. Yeah. And it's X number of feet away from the end of the actual road.
Right. About thirty-seven feet.
Okay.
Now, what do you mean when you say the actual road?
They approved the road.
Up to the point that the city accepted it.
Yeah.
No pavement, right?
Right. But that's also the accepted extension.
I see.
So
There's a gap. So so there's a gap between the the appellant's locus and the edge of the accepted public way.
Right. It's about right here is the point at which approximately, it may be, it may be somewhere more in here, but this is the edge of this improved way as a street for the purposes of providing frontage. And then everything, this thirty-seven feet from this point to the property line is there is a ten-foot wide bike path, but that's not been determined as an improved way on which the planning board has determined is suitable to constitute frontage for a property.
So the planning board, in a sense, has, in a, in an indirect way, has already looked at this question. It may or may not be dispositive. And as part of their approval, they determined, the planning board determined that that the only qualified frontage is basically elsewhere. Is that correct?
Right. So this other plan here was an A and R plan where these lots were proposed to be carved up. This is from two thousand and three, I believe, from the Beaver Brook nominee trust surveyor from two thousand, I'm sorry, the date is fuzzy. It's three, I think. And so you see all these lot lines here were frontage from Haydenville Road. And the planning board determined at that time that was the frontage for all of this land. And this goes back to pre Beaver Book construction of the twenty-eight homes, twenty-six, twenty-eight homes up there. So this was determined, all of this land here was determined to have frontage from Haydenville Road, not from Grove Avenue.
Now, I assume that one of the appellant's positions is the whole reason he created the shape of this lot, which included that whole piece that runs along, you know, encompasses what is now the bike path. And the reason he granted an easement to the public to use the bike path, but at the same time reserved a right of access over that same strip is because the plan all along was for this to be a building lot.
I mean, that's been the plan all along for this, this area to be building lots. I mean, these were streets that were laid out. These were lots that were chopped up. At one point, they were a certain size. Now they're another size. But yeah, that was the idea all along to reserve the right through there to build on this property. And and that's why it was specifically reserved, the right to access it. Now, the city goes and in one hand says, we love your bike path. Thank you for accepting. We would love it. We accept that easement. We, that's great of you. And we're going to deny your access that you specifically reserved that. I mean, it just comes off to me as as frankly unfair. The city was granted that easement for no consideration or nominal consideration. And they accepted it with those specific terms that that those rights were reserved to access across it. They.
So my question on this, I'm sorry to cut you short, but the it assumes you already had that right to access and you had a right to access as was like according to zoning. So I don't know that you were, you've lost any of that. You may not ever have had it. Like, do we know what access to, you know, vehicular access you actually were approved for that you're potentially going to lose now?
I mean, I could go drive up and down the bike path right, right now. And the city couldn't stop me.
You can't. It's non-motorized only.
Well, I I could. Well, I, I could with the permission of the owner. I could go drive up and down it right now with my car.
I think your point is the owner owns that land.
Yes. And specifically reserved the right. And when you grant an easement, sometimes you grant somebody an easement to say, put power lines and their power lines may obstruct your whatever. But in this case, we specifically reserved in that grant of the easement for the, the bike path specifically reserved the right to vehicle access so that the city could not stop that access. The city can't say, well, this is a bike path. You can't drive there. Say, no city. We reserved that right. And that is very specific in there.
But the issue before us is is the required frontage on a public way.
And I think again, that the city has accepted this as a public, the public can go up and down this way. And specifically the owner has reserved the right specifically that they can use it as a, for vehicles also. But as far as a public way, I don't think there is any requirement that it, you know, if the public has a right of access, it's a public way.
Well, that's the question. But Carolyn, can you, I'm having trouble in the ordinance. Where is that definition? It's not under general definitions of public way. Cause the ordinance is, is our Bible. Carolyn, where did you find the definition of public way?
So it's not an ordinance thing. It's a statutory thing. So there's, there's a couple things. So there's, there's a public, there's a public access, which was granted and we wanted it for the purposes of a bike path. And yes, we also have reserved for maintenance vehicles, trucks and cars, because we need to be able to make, to access for that purpose.
Access doesn't make it a public way is the question.
That's right. And so the other thing about the owner, of course, the owner reserved a right to access with their vehicles because of course at the same way that the city wanted access for maintenance vehicles, that could be granted. That's not the same as saying you have legal building frontage and lot frontage and therefore that because, just because you called it single family home access, doesn't mean you have a legal building lot. It means that you're reserving the right to access your property with a vehicle. And so the question with, I mean, this additional question, even after you get past, you know, I think that there's clearly the city would say, yes, you can come onto your property with a vehicle. That's a different analysis as to whether or not you can have a single family home that has 10 trips a day. It goes back and forth on the same bike path that the city built with city funds. And whether or not that's an appropriate, you know, layered use of that easement. But that's even after the question about whether there's a legal building a lot there. So anybody can write into their easement when they're granting to the city. I want to be able to do X, Y, and Z. That doesn't mean legally under other statutes like zoning and the Wetlands Protection Act that you are actually allowed to do all those things.
Right. That's where I think there's a disconnect. I mean, my, my take on this is there's no question that the appellant owns the land that the bike path is on. The appellant granted an easement to the city to allow essentially the bike path usage. The appellant reserved the right to use the same strip of land despite the grant of the easement to the city for its own access to this locus. But, and may have intended that to mean that that's going to make my, this, this parcel a buildable lot. But the question remains. Does all of the four above that I just listed mean that the appellant also has the required minimum frontage on a the appropriate the, the, the public way as defined by the statute and as required by the zoning ordinance.
And Carol, you had mentioned that public ways defined by statute were in several places. Can I just ask you for those specific references? I haven't found anything that excludes this. And I would like to look at that if perhaps I'm missing something, but from everything I've found that this is not excluded as a public way in any
Well, see, I think you're using public way in, in sort of the broadest sense to suit, you know, and support the, the creative arguments that you're making. But the, what's elusive here is what is the correct definition of public way for purposes of the analysis and the decision that this board needs to make? And I, I'm not sure right now what the answer is. Did we just get all these exhibits and so on today? That's when I first saw them.
There were some that were part of the application and so they were duplicative of the application, but they were
But the vast bulk of them just came today.
But did the decision, the case decision come in today? I mean, I know it was
I had listed it, but I didn't actually, I listed it in my original, but I didn't actually, or I may have included it. And I don't recall for sure.
I know you don't need to do this for us, but did you jeopardize that case? Are there subsequent cases or is that the only case on point?
There's, there's multiple different cases that talk about this. That's what I thought was most on point to this. I mean, there are lots of different cases that deal with all these issues. What is a public way? What is not? What is on the accepted list of, of public ways? And what is a public way because of the way it's, and I, this was the, what was on, you know, not giving this to, to, you know, the land court. I tried to get the, the most on point case and present it. And certainly I'm sure there are hundreds of cases in Massachusetts dealing with what is or isn't.
I personally would, would really like to have more time to digest this case and see if there's anything else out there, but, but that's just as an aside for now. I mean, I do come back to where this all started and that was a a decision by the building commissioner determining that it's not a building lot because of an, of a lack of frontage on a public way. I mean, every word in that sentence becomes critical to the, the analysis that we, we, we're being asked to make. And I understand a hundred percent of the developers, you know, viewpoint and that of the, the, the people who were hoping and planning to build on the lot, but that's about all I can say for now. Cause I'm, there's a lot to digest here.
So the subdivision control law, which is the 41, chapter 41 deals with the creation of public ways. So when, and for the purposes of frontage, frontage is about building frontage on a public way. And so that goes back to then the definition that's incorporated into our zoning about what that frontage means. And it's a way on which the planning board has determined is adequate. The whole purpose is for adequacy of access is why we have frontage. And so the adequacy of the access from a public way, and it's not just a path that's, that has a public easement where the public has the right to pass and repass. That doesn't make it a public way. So all of our bike paths in North Hampton, they're not public ways. They are public trails.
Just because an easement has been acquired by the city to allow the public to ride bicycles on them does not make it a public way. That I think is a critical question. And you're saying from your standpoint, it's not a question. It's, it's an answer. It's not a public way.
It has to do with safety and access, right? Of fire and emergency vehicles and
utilities, snow removal.
But what, but what attorney Sosowski is suggesting is that the driveway satisfies that. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think there's, there's no question about it.
So, but then the question is, is the driveway a public way?
Well, but also it's not up to the property owner to make the determination about whether the adequacy has been met.
I'm just trying, no, I understand that. And I wasn't suggesting that argument was correct. I was just trying to flesh out what the argument was.
Yeah. And I think as opposed to all other bike paths, perhaps in, in North Hampton, this one is different. Where specifically we did retain that right. So I, I can't go drive down a bike path, you know, off of Damon Route. Whereas the owners of this can go drive down this. That's, I think a critical difference. That's maybe not quite appreciated in that we specifically have that right. Whereas you don't, you know, you don't have that right elsewhere. And that access, the purpose of access, you know, as people had pointed out, you know, the city drives their trucks up and down for maintenance of this, the, the city can go and maintain the bike path. The city drives here and drives there on it. Well, I think that shows that this, this is adequate for access to a single family home. I mean, we're not talking about putting a Walmart in here. It's, you know, you know, a couple of people that want to build a home and want to do it and, and move to, you know, North Hampton and are desperate to, to do that. And they're, you know, kind of looking at this, this board for, for help. And I think, you know, the purpose of this layout was always that these were lots. And this was always designed and destined to be building lots. You know, if you look at any, any subdivision, anytime a home is built, well, why wasn't there a house there before? Well, because before there wasn't, you know, every time you build the house, that's the way, you know, it is these, this has been progressing down that street. If you look on the other side of the street, just slightly before there are, you know, new homes going in there now. If we talk about attic, you know, adequacy of access, they're right there. The street is being built out. I think it's just the way things progress in, in the world. And as North Hampton gets, you know, a greater population, that's going to happen. And that was the design of this plan that these would be built out.
And why not go to the planning board with an app, a subdivision application to extend Grove Avenue in accordance with subdivision standards? Cause that would ensure, I mean, I, I, I lost you when you said because the city can take a truck on the, on the, on the bike path, that means the bike packs path is satisfactory for purposes of access addressing, you know, all the concerns of the city. A fire truck cannot go on that bike path to access your house. And that's one of the things that the city would always try to regulate.
But I think a fire truck getting to 88 Grove is no different than a fire truck getting to whatever this would be 90. You know, how, how much different is that 50 feet up the road? If there's a concern with that, then
Well, that comes up in every application and we hear from the fire department saying, no, we have to be able to turn our truck around. I mean, that happens. It's not the width of a bike path. I'll tell you that much, but, but just as an alternative, doesn't it make sense to go to the planning board with a new survey to extend? I know that you're trying to avoid that by making all of these arguments to us, but
I, I think it becomes cost prohibitive, you know, when you've got to start doing all this for one lot. Essentially, and it becomes really cost prohibitive and, and Mr. And Miss Mateo, they just won't be able to probably
Well, I'll tell you one thing, the, the planning board would have to approve whatever you were going to do if we did grant the relief you're requesting. I mean, it's, it's not the wild west out there. And I suppose that would come up when you go for a building permit. I know you already did. I imagine that's why you're here now. But, but issues relating to satisfying the, the requirements of public safety would, would absolutely come up. But I hear what you're saying is, yeah, but you still don't want to go through the subdivision of approval process. But I'm just putting that out there because I, I, I think the arguments you're making are, are are impressive in terms of, of
I mean, another one I, we haven't got to, I mean, frankly, a lot on this, and I don't think I've addressed this. It was in my, in my package that I submitted, they, they granted a building permit. The city has granted a building permit to the McCarthys. And if we look at the, I can, that's exhibits. Is that E? E like elephant? Now that you, you don't have a map on here to, oh, there is a map. So that's lot nine on this map. That's shown as the first page. So if you can see where that is, so we're 12 lot nine was granted a building permit.
When, when was that?
Um, the permit is dated 12502.
Carolyn, do you have any comment on that?
And where is their driveway?
They did not build, it appears the applicant was in a state and I'm not entirely certain what happened with whether there was, you know, that lacked the agreement amongst the, the heirs of the estate or what happened, but they did apply for and were granted a, a building permit for that lot.
But they never built.
I'm seeing the application. I'm not seeing the approval. Am I missing it?
Are you're in the file for the
I'm in what was exhibit E and I see the map on top and then I see
It is all the way on the bottom. I squiggly something P A T L L O.
Subdivision approved. Oh, Tony. Yeah.
Yeah. 12802.
Has been taken.
But he checked off subdivision approval. They needed subdivision approval from the planning board, which is exactly what I'm recommending here. Checked off.
And wait, let me
So, yeah, so it's saying no legally.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had and that's what I wanted to discuss with you. And they, so they were granted previously, which is frankly even more confusing where it didn't go through it.
Oh, that's the one where it didn't go through. Cause that one says additional permits required. See below. No legally improved frontage. Same issue as us. Subdivision approval from plant, planning board is required as well as for the other permit required. So January 28, though, too.
Right.
And so they had gotten a permit previously, however, on that. And it's frankly
But the permit couldn't be used. They couldn't start building until they got that approval. David's right.
All I know is that January 28, oh, two is exactly the same situation before us where the building inspector said, there's no legally improved frontage. Other permit required subdivision approval from planning board, which is exactly what I'm suggesting in this case as the, as the, the appropriate pathway. But I realize it's, there's an expense to, and time to that. Because it's the planning board that looks at these issues of what constitutes safe access, safe roadways, safe frontage. They get input from public safety, police, fire. And that's what we, that's what they do. I do have a question, Carolyn, for you though, in, in the
I'm not sure Carolyn's here right now.
Oh, did we lose her?
I'm here.
Okay. Sorry, Carolyn.
That's okay.
I know we're going to lose you briefly. Was that at seven, Carolyn?
I already took care of that. So we're good.
Great. Thank you. So Carolyn, when I'm looking at the memo we received, that's why I asked, where is the definition? I see some notes that say frontage is defined as, and I didn't think you read this earlier. But the uninterrupted length of the front lot line, which conforms to the minimum frontage requirement. That's the footage. And is on, these are Oars. A, a public way or way which the city clerk certifies as maintained and used as a public way. Not just a public way that's being called a public way because there was an easement granted to ride bicycles on it. B, a way shown on a previously approved subdivision plan, which, which we have a previous subdivision plan. I don't think it was approved in 19 08 or 1948, which has been constructed to the standards required when subdivision approval was granted. So again, it's all about a way that satisfies the safety standards and specifications of the city or a way that predates subdivision control. That has, which again, arguably that might be that earlier date, at least 1908, not 1948. That has in the planning board's opinion, suitable with grades and construction adequate and reasonable for vehicular traffic, including emergency vehicles and snow removal vehicles and installation of utilities. When I look at those and we can find out the origin of these definitions. But when I look at these, you can see why I'm feeling such a huge gap between the public way, frontage definition required in the materials we have. And this argument that, well, this is a public way because it's And this argument that, well, this is a public way because it's a bike path, which was an easement granted to the public to ride bikes. And, and none of the, and even if you're gonna make the argument that, well, it's our land, we can build on it. There's that gap in between, uh, your land and where the existing accepted, compliant roadway ends. So I don't know if you want to come, that was long-winded, but I don't know if you want to comment on that, but that's one of the problems I'm having.
Yeah, I actually wanted to just point out, I had, uh, I, I just attached and I just sent to Carolyn. I don't know if she's able to see, an email I just sent her moments ago with a ninety-eight, um, apparently it didn't attach earlier. It's a ninety-eight approval of a, a permit on, on building lot nine or on parcel nine that was, um, granted to the McCarthys.
I'm noticing on that, that application that Tony Patillo signed, saying it needed further looking at by the, by the planning board, that those lot lines are quite different. At some point between two thousand and two and when, uh, the Beaver Book nominee trust did the gigantic subdivision. And there was a negotiation with the city and all of those conservation easements and the bike path, et cetera. Um, at some point, chunks of the paper street were transferred to ownership and became part of lot twelve.
I, I don't believe that's the case. I don't believe that's the case.
You, um, looking at your exhibit.
The funky one, the Nebraska shaped one.
Uh, Oklahoma. Well, lots of them are Nebraska. Yeah.
And again, I think what, what the actual fee interest is and where, what some sketches showed are not necessarily always, um, they don't always mesh perfectly. I think as David knows, sometimes you look at, um, a survey doesn't necessarily match the states.
Oh, absolutely. Um, you know, yeah.
Tax map. And I think that the fee, I, if, from what I understand, the fee has always been owned by this lot twelve. In that, if we're gonna call it Nebraska or.
Well, say, looking at your exhibit E.
I think it's Oklahoma.
Yeah. And, and again, I don't know where that map comes from on that.
It's a former assessor.
Tax map.
Tax map. And you're, but you're talking to three lawyers and an engineer here. So we, you know, I read these things and study them. And so at some point, there was a transfer of ownership to the owner of lot twelve, not to the owner of eleven or thirteen or nine or.
I don't believe so. I, I think that just this map that we're looking at in, in E has got Grove Ave going right through there. And that's what the city said it was. I mean, that was a city map, city tax map, and that was the city tax map. He said, there's Grove Ave, goes right through all the way through here. And at some point, they've kind of changed their story, maybe. As to that.
Transfer of land from ownership of the city to, at some point, lot twelve became contiguous with, and owns it now, according to the, uh, the A and R plan.
Yeah. And, and I don't believe there was ever transfer of ownership. It, that's showing because Grove Ave essentially, if you think of, really any property you own to the center of the street, the street isn't actually owned by a city. You own to the center of the street and every street is a right of way.
I, uh, no.
Yeah, well.
Not, not in Mass Highway or.
Uh, I guess, uh, uh, city high, uh, uh, state highway.
Not state.
We'll say every, every local street here, you own to the ci- center of the street. And people will say, well, that's the town's tree. Well, not exactly sometimes with this year. It's your tree, but the town's got an easement, the easement. I mean, um, the city owns to the, really essentially nothing on, on most roads. Where they do own occasionally on a, a state highway or, or an interstate highway. But every street, you know, the building I'm sitting front, in front of, you own to the center of the, of the road and the, the, the house on the other side also owns to the center.
We better shift the argument away because, you know, uh, twenty-five years of, of civil engineering, uh, doesn't, that doesn't, I guess, that's not computing for me. So, let's go back.
David understands my argument on that.
He's, yeah, he's talking about the derelict fee statute, but we don't want to get into that now. It, it, it has to do, Sarah, with definitions and, and semantics and so on. And I'm not sure it's productive to get into that. Uh, Joe, you're talking about the derelict fee statute.
Yeah, referencing that generally, whereas I, I don't believe this, the, the fee interest in this road was ever the cities. The city said, a- a- according to that map, we've got our, the road goes through there. That's where our easement is. So Grove Ave is shown on the A and R plan on exhibit D, that Grove Ave. The city doesn't own the land underneath Grove Ave in any point on Grove Ave anywhere. The, the homes on either side of it own the land underneath it.
Yeah, I don't think we have to get it. I think the point Sarah was making is we see a discrepancy between this assessors map, which suggests that the city, that Grove Ave goes right through your locus and your plan, which shows that that same strip of called Grove Ave and the assessors is, is your locus. It's part of your locus. But I'm not sure where, where, where that takes us anyway, except confusion about the, these plans.
Good point. We want to get back to, as David is very good at keeping us on track as far as what is the question before us in, in general? Um, you know, we, we need housing. It's a nice, maybe it's a very nice spot for a house. The question is, can we allow it? Uh, I did, let me just, uh, mention that I did pull up the map, the lot I was thinking of. Uh, from some years ago, Carolyn may remember, was at the end of Kimball Street. And, um, so that, and as, uh, Elizabeth noted, there's a, a house with this long skinny flag pole. And they ended up having to get frontage at, on Hillcrest in order to use it. They couldn't use the end of Kimball fifty foot width as their frontage.
I mean, I always thought that was like what lawyers call black letter law in the zoning context, that you can't use the end of a street to satisfy a frontage requirement. Um, but.
And that's what we decided in Dewey Court.
Mm-hmm. And, and so I believe their, their argument is that, uh, it's not just the end, that it's still a way.
Yeah, that's not even, but doesn't even about the end. It's, it's so many feet away from the end of. But again, it all turns on what, what we're calling a public way. I think if you say the public way is the street that was accepted, that's as much as thirty-seven feet away from the appellant's locus.
And that's what, that's what a public way is. It's not because the public can ride their bikes on the bike path portion. That doesn't make it a defined public way.
Right. For these purposes, Carol, what, what is the source, Carolyn, of the material in our memo? That says frontage is defined as and the purpose of requiring frontage is to ensure adequate and safe access from a street or private property.
Yeah. So, um, the zoning stipulates what frontage is, but it is taken and mirrors the subdivision control rules and regulations. And there, there's definitely lots of case law about, um, frontage and adequacy of the access. Um, and, and so, you know, if you, even if you were to accept that, um, this paper street could potentially constitute, um, a way, it's not, it, it's not been approved by the planning board as a way, um, for the purposes of creating frontage.
So what would the mechanism, what would the mechanism be? If we, we, I think it has to be unanimous vote. I'm, this is purely hypothetical. If we were to vote to overturn the building inspector's denial, what is the mechanism to ensure after that, that this the, 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 the access, which would be over, I mean, how do you get from, from the end of Grove Avenue to the new house they're building? We, in a way that will satisfy the city's and public safety requirements, which is just like procedurally.
Subdivision, um, approval. So you.
So, so what happens? But who tells them they have to go for subdivision approval if we, if we overturn the building inspected? I just want to hear, think through the different scenarios here.
Um, so they could, um, they could, they don't necessarily need to go to the building department to file subdivision for, but even anybody can submit a subdivision application to the planning board. Doesn't, it's not a building permit process. It goes to the planning board. So someone, um, in this scenario would put together plans showing compliance.
You're saying voluntarily, what would force them to do that? To ensure safe, the installation of safe and sort of compliant access.
Right. Because if we, if we were to overturn the decision, essentially we're saying that we believe there is frontage, right?
Yeah, I'm just for the sake of argument. What's the scenario?
Then what, what?
So if you overturned, um, if you, oh, if you overturned the building commissioner's, um, ruling and it would have to be unanimous. Um, uh, then you would be saying you, either you think that it, um, uh, it does have frontage because it meets the frontage definition of frontage. Um, or I suppose you could say it could meet the definition of frontage, but the planning board has to make that determination. Um, but I think probably the cleaner way is to uphold the building commissioner's determination because the building commissioner looked at it and said, this doesn't meet the definition of frontage, therefore I can't grant it. He didn't say, there's no way ever to figure out a way to do that. He didn't say you need a variance. He didn't say anything. He just said, well, I mean, you could go through a variance process and say, I don't, I don't need frontage. But at any rate, he was just making the determination that it didn't meet the frontage requirement. So that doesn't bar someone from then going to the next step. Okay, how do I create frontage? And the way from the beginning of the nineteen forties till now, the way to create frontage is subdivision.
Right. Okay.
And again, I think that goes back to our argument. And, uh, and Carolyn, I had sent you an, um, an email of a zoning permit where the, the grant in ninety-eight for parcel nine. Um, I just sent that to you a moment ago and I've got it here if anybody wants to see.
Is that the same property that?
Same property. Yeah. So we were talking about.
Where it says that they need subdivision.
But it was granted and they had frontage in this. Now, what happened? I, I don't know. And it's can frankly confusing with the city, how you could grant a permit, uh, and then deny it later. Um, but yes, there was granted and it was frontage and the city made a determination that this road was frontage from parcel nine.
Right. But four years later.
Been a mistake.
Yeah, four years later it was denied. So I, I'm not sure, again, we should, that might be another red herring. I think, I think we should just focus on this locus.
I mean, I think it is important once, when, um, the, you know, the city granted it for, based on the same street, the same, um,
But then, but four years later, they denied it. So doesn't that?
Happened.
Probably because they real, they thought it was a mistake when they came back for a building permit or something. I don't know. Denied it on the exact same terms that this building commissioner denied with, with this locus. Um, any other questions from the board? This is, there's a lot to digest here, but we do, I think we, we, members of the public want to comment also.
One thing I'm, I'm noticing is you're, you're talking about, uh, process and uh, perhaps consequences of overturning is that there are um, additional lots that by this reasoning would now have frontage such as eight, nine, um, eleven, thirty-one, everybody else down there. And, you know, maybe it would make sense for those folks to, you know, get together and try to do something. But, um, it does, it does bother me when, you know, language changes and rules change. And somebody who bought a building lot, you know, as an investment or someplace to put their retirement home now has, can't do it, no value. So that always bothers me, but.
And I think that's again, the reason that the courts, oh, I'm sorry.
But that's, uh, and, and that's also part of why we as the zoning board are just determining and why I don't make the rules.
Uh, but I think that's what the courts have looked at. And, and that's why this paper street is such an issue, that once somebody does buy a lot on this paper street, they can rely on that. And they can't say, well, okay, now we're, we're changing the rules. You bought this. A- a- and, and even though that paper street was, was there before the current rules, you know, these lots were owned by individuals that did buy them for whatever reason to build on them. I assume they bought them to build on them.
Well, doesn't that raise an issue for your client, Joe? And that is that, that same paper street on paper, as you and I know, gives people to the north, I think you're referring to them, other, other people rights to cross right through your locus.
At least four, maybe six other lots.
Yeah.
Well, they, you know, it, it is possible at some time in the future, they could look at that, but they don't have the vehicle access that this one does specifically retained in the, um, in that granted easement.
I found it very difficult on that paper, I'm sorry, on the, uh, paper street to really like lock it up against a current map. To actually like confirm whose lot is what. It just feels like a lot, so much has changed in terms of those lots that, as you described, like, like which numbers you thought were reflective of this property.
It would be really helpful to see the, the currently approved subdivision plan with the lots laid out, to your point, Maureen. Um, with like an overlay of this, the layout of this paper street. I think, is that what you're saying? But, uh, but, but let's, okay, let's, but, you know, I realize the paper streets are weird things and real estate lawyers are afraid of them all the time. Because, because they could, they created rights on paper. But I'm also concerned that if we were to overturn the building inspector, it kind of feels like we're completely undermining the whole purpose of the subdivision control statute, which, which is to, uh, uh, help to ensure public safety in terms of the uh, quality and adequacy and safety of, 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 of a, of a, of a route of access from a street to a private lot. But so those are the things I'm struggling with, but I think maybe we should try to move on, uh, to let members of the public comment unless there are more. Of course, we can, we can ask questions later. We're not closing the hearing. Is that okay with the board members? If maybe we give the public who've been very patient through this discussion, um, a chance to comment?
Unless, um, Mr. Attorney Sazowski's client wanted to say anything, but otherwise I agree with that, David.
Can I just add one other thing that, you know, that people, folks can mull, including the, um, appellate? That I think the LeBlanc case also said, that, um, the parties within that, even though maybe the paper street control doesn't say anything about the city's ability to require the improvements to meet the standards uh, or the construction of the way. So, um, I just, I want to make sure that that is um, reevaluated because wrapped into that case that is central to their argument is that they still get to use this. But I think that case also said, but it still needs to meet the standards that the planning board might have.
Well, I think that case means that they can't be denied their building permit. And if the city's got other, uh, you know, other things that the city does, then that's what, you know, the city does. But they, they can't be denied their building permit on that basis. That just because it hasn't been constructed as of this point, doesn't mean the city gets to say, no, we're just denying you. Um, it doesn't supersede all city regulations. Um, I think is that's what it means.
Right. If, um, I mean, again, that's why I was asking before about the mechanism. If we were to overturn the building commissioner, um, could we have a condition to our decision requiring, requiring the appellate to go to the planning board? They are the experts at this, the planning board, to, uh, have the authority to verify that frontage standards. And any work that's done satisfies the frontage standards of the planning board. Or if that's what I was getting at, or does that not really work, a mechanism like that?
I don't see how we can, how, how the planning board could have jurisdiction over that if we make a determination that it meets the frontage. And that's what we would have to determine in order. And that's what we would have to determine in order to overturn, right?
I think.
Not about the frontage, it wouldn't be about the frontage. It would be to ensure that, that the, the rest of the project, the house and the means of access to the house have to be constructed in accordance with standards that satisfy the planning board and the fire department and the police department. Go ahead, Carolyn.
I was just gonna say, I don't, I don't think that would be a condition necessarily that you would place and may sound like a little bit like I'm backtracking, but I think the central issue is either you're, you're holding up the determination by the building commissioner that he can't find that frontage is being met, but the planning board can either by reviewing a subdivision or evaluating the facts on the ground and saying, oh, this does meet adequate access and safety for, you know, and, and they could review the ground and say, okay, nothing needs to be done because this is a public, this meets the definition of a public way. Or they need to go through, I mean, it's our representation. I think they need to go through subdivision approval because there's no improvement past the point that's been accepted. But I think the bottom line is your jurisdiction is to say, did the building commissioner err or not?
Well, can we, could we flip it to the planning board without making a determination?
Uh, no.
Okay. So I think, or do we, should we hear from members of the public if other people would like to comment? And I'll ask that anyone who does speak, first of all, either raise your hand, is that how it works, Carolyn, or?
Yeah.
And then.
Electronically.
And then Carolyn. And then Carolyn will what, unmute? You'll unmute that person?
Everyone has the ability to unmute themselves. So if you want to call on them and then they can unmute, that would be helpful. I can also assist if people are having difficulty.
So you might want to explain where the raised hand function is, Carolyn, in case people don't know.
There should be a reactions button on the lower portion of the screen for the people who call in or called in and want to raise their hand. I believe it is star nine.
People on Zoom, if you go to participants, it will show up. If you click on participants, it will show up at the bottom of that, right?
That's where mine is. No.
That's where mine is.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Just procedurally for the meeting, it's ten after seven. We have various options as a board. We can ask for more information. We could continue. Or we could close the hearing and make a decision. I just wanted to say those out loud as those are the possibilities.
Right, we could also take a little break. At least the board members have not been able to take a break. I don't know, I guess, but why don't we get started? I will ask that anyone who wants to speak, identify your, your name and address for the record that, that is being kept. And again, address questions or comments to, it doesn't really matter, we're virtual, but to board members.
I think we should be asking just for the town, not the address. Is that right, Carolyn?
No, that's, City Council has devised that as their preferred mechanism.
Okay.
It's important because it really relates to the proximity of the proposed project. So you want to get a sense of where people are in relation to.
Makes sense. Okay.
Okay, does anybody want to speak? And Carolyn, you may have to help me. I might not be able to tell or see if somebody wants to speak.
I don't see any raised hands if someone wants to chat to me or Elizabeth to say they want to say anything, or if they want to turn on their screen and just wave their hands, they can do that, but.
And if not, if not, that's okay too. I mean, we didn't, we did get a letter while we're waiting, Carolyn. Tell me if you see something. We did get a letter, which I assume now is in the file, Carolyn, that you sent us today.
Yes, from Deb Jacob. Yes, that's in the online file.
Okay. I, so I don't need to read that letter. I, I suppose I could, I could just summarize it in a sentence. It's from Deb Jacobs. And she is writing in support of the, in support of the commissioner's denial of the building permit. For safety reasons, it makes no sense to consider the end of the street that is narrower than most to constitute frontage. And then she talks about policies apparently of the Leeds, Massachusetts postmaster. But that, that, that is available in the online file, correct, Carolyn? So maybe, maybe, maybe we can move on if there's no one, I want to make sure we're not missing somebody who wants to talk, but I see Rose Bookbinder.
Okay. Hi, I'm, I'm just driving back from work. I, I, Rose Bookbinder. I grew up at eighty-eight Grove Avenue and currently co-own that with my mom, but I also reside in Haydenville, Mass. Just up the road and I just wanted to speak also in agreement with the building commissioner's denial of this project. As someone who grew up on that street, I'm pretty aware of just how of a narrow road it is and, you know, all of the, as Deb spoke in her letter, all of the mailboxes were needed to be moved because it just was difficult just for the post office to be able to access the road. And now with, you know, so many folks knowing about the area because of the bike path, there's, you know, been a lot of conversation about parking and it's been very congested there. So, you know, I think that the property is, you know, nearly forty feet from the improved way. And, you know, while, you know, I appreciate that folks want to, you know, enjoy that beautiful section of North Hampton, just want to recognize that there would be, you know, extreme difficulty for public, for access of utility vehicles and also emergency vehicles. And, and just don't think that, that this proposed plan is, is appropriate for the end of, of the road. So just speaking in agreement with the building commissioner's decision.
Thank you, thank you. Any other hands? I don't see any, Carolyn, do you see any?
No, oh, yeah.
Amy Bookbinder.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, hi. I'm the last speaker's mother and I've been living here for, I think, thirty-seven years at eighty-eight Grove Avenue. And we've all seen a lot of increased traffic here. And the first thing I wanted to, to mention is that, yes, the post office no longer delivers our mail because they declared the end of Grove to be too dangerous and without adequate space for their trucks to turn around. And I also wanted to, I assume that you, you've had a, a site visit here, but if you haven't, or you have, you might have noticed that there are now no parking signs that were put up all along this section of Grove Avenue because of concern about the dangerousness of increased parking here because it's narrow, not to, you know, not just, you know, any old wanting traffic, but because this is a narrow street. And those signs were put up by the DW in coordination with the police department. So there is two other governing bodies in the city that also have concerns about safety here. And in addition to that, the city council is now considering an ordinance to make those no parking signs permanent because of the great increase of traffic since last summer with the, the growing popularity of the swimming area. So, you know, there are several governing bodies here who, who are concerned and addressing the issue of safety here. And so that's my, the first thing I wanted to say. And the second thing is, well, that was a big first one, but my second one. And maybe Carolyn, you can help explain this better than I could. But I believe that when I had my lawsuit years ago, it was determined by the judge that Grove Avenue could not be extended beyond where it is now, which as Carolyn pointed out, is thirty-seven feet away. You know, from, from the spot in question. So Carolyn, maybe you can address that further, but my understanding is that it was determined in that court that it can't be extended.
Um, you know, I'm sorry, I have to go back and reread the outcome of that case. So, but I don't, I mean, I think the issue still come back to whether or not it needs, I think that probably relates to the fact that the adequacy hasn't been created beyond the points that the court determined was the accepted way. And so in order to overcome that, you go through the subdivision review process or the planning board review process and the planning board then stipulates what what's required to make that. So the judge may have said, you know, there's, it can't be accepted beyond this point because it's unsafe. I'm sorry, the words that you suggested, but that doesn't preclude someone from then applying to the planning board to make those changes. That's what my interpretation would be. But again, I haven't, I'm not familiar with that particular text from the decision.
And are you able to say what the planning board's position would be on that? Would it uphold the, the court recommendation or is that unknown?
That would be unknown. So someone would have to come to, would have to apply, show what the existing conditions are, show, you know, the existing extent of the improved way. And then what, what the conditions are between that point and this parcel and any proposed improvement by any prospective applicant. So I, I couldn't tell you without having, without reviewing a plan and the planning board couldn't say anything, I think, without reviewing the plan.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Anybody else who'd like to speak from the public? I don't think we see anyone now. So I think we can go back to the board's analysis. The thing that I'm having the most trouble with is the reason for this frontage requirement is public safety. And as I understand it, if we were to overturn the building commissioner's decision, there is no mechanism to ensure that an access way is installed that will satisfy the the requirements for public safety. I've asked the question a couple of times unless I'm missing something. And whereas if we were to uphold it, it would essentially require the applicant or the appellant to go to the planning board to, to do this correctly and have the plant, get the planning board and the city's input on safe and effective access. I know that has nothing to do with the legal arguments that have been made. I'm just saying on a gut feeling in terms of the reason the zoning ordinance exists in terms of public safety and the reason we're here. So that's just an observation. Any other thoughts from other board members?
Are you muted?
You're muted, Elizabeth.
I did that when we were listening to other people. Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I, I have to say, I, I feel bad for the appellant here who, you know, perhaps has purchased this property in reliance on building. You know, I, I know that you've outright rejected the idea of the subdivision, but approval, work and approval, but I, I do think that is one way that this could still happen. So I, I, you know, I, I do think housing, an additional housing in the city is a good thing. I think that should be part of our fabric. And I want to encourage this to go forward, but I, I, I also am very concerned about, you know, making sure that everybody's safe and, and that we, we meet the standards that are required. And I, I think I am comfortable in making the decision to uphold the commissions, the, the building commissioner's decision because I, it feels like it's consistent across the different cases that we've seen on, on the zoning board. And what we're, we're seeing from the appellant that, that, that case that came up where it was very clear that there was a referral to the planning board and getting subdivision approval from the planning board. So, you know, I, I, for that reason, I mean, I, I think it makes sense to uphold the decision, but not without recourse to being able to move forward.
Before someone else talks, I want to add an additional thought addressing the legal arguments. The, 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 they seem to rest on a couple of things, aside from one case, which is only one case, at least that's been brought to our attention. One possibility, by the way, is to continue the hearing if the appellant has other authority to cite beyond just the one case, but you know.
And also to find out what happened between, in those four years between that. Yeah, yeah.
But the, I, I am impressed by the fact that in two thousand and two, the then current building commissioner did exactly the same thing as this one. But, um, but, but the, 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 the argument seemed to rest on, one, this truly ancient paper street from nineteen oh eight, giving rise to rights, two, I don't deny that the art, that the, the, the owner of the locus, the appellant here has rights to have access to the lot because they were reserved in the easement that was granted to the city. But to me, that simply does not rise to the level of the required public way, quote unquote, as required for safety and, and purposes and public benefit. So I just wanted to add that I didn't want to make it sound like I'm, I'm, my, my only thinking is that there's, there will be no way to ensure the installation of a, of a, of a means of access that complies with the, the safety requirements of the city. It's also that, that I, I'm not, I have a problem relying on a, on a, on a paper street from nineteen oh eight that has since been superseded how many times by subsequent planning, by subsequent subdivision plans that have been approved by the planning board, unlike the one from nineteen oh eight that I don't think had any public approval that we can see on the face of it. And then this, again, I'm repeating myself, but this idea that to say that because you've reserved the right to have access to your lot, that that and that the city has been granted more specifically an easement to allow bicyclists to use it, that that causes the status of this way to rise to the level of a public right, a public way that is the public way that we need to see or that is required to satisfy the requirement of frontage. I, I really fall down on that point. But I'll, I'll let someone else talk. Either, and, and any other comments, Maureen? Either, and any other comments, Maureen or Sarah?
Well, I liked Sarah's, you know, digression, slight digression about hoping that there's some possibility like numbers, maximizing numbers to consider that there's a couple of lots beyond their property that might make a subdivision more financially possible. And then when I hear the book binders, and this is, you know, really just thoughts on what other options there might be for you, but that when I think, hear the book binders talk about the already tricky logistics about that street. If there might somewhere down the pike be the opportunity to partner with the city to do something at the end of that street that's not just subdivision, but a safer access to give up, give easement even more to cul-de-sac, some turnaround, some way to make the street more navigable. Cause at some point, the city will look at that street and realize we have to do something there. It's narrow. It's too narrow. So I just, I look to the future and think that there might be some other possibilities open for you that would make this potentially doable.
And that's exactly what the planning board process is for. I mean, I don't think that's an overstatement, but, but, but thank you. And, and Sarah, do you?
Yeah, I'm just, what's been bothering me is something about the process. There was, it appears that there was some extensive negotiation between either Hanley or Melnick with the Beaverbrook, all that whole giant A and R. There's a lot of pieces to that. A lot of moving pieces that were negotiated, including that easement, the conservation restrictions, the what, what was the intent in there? Because as that easement was granted to the city, was the city not involved in that language that, that that where the easement was, was being granted with the reserving the right to, you know, use it as a driveway or something. And then the fact that it came off of the paper street status and entered the tax rolls as part of this lot twelve. There's, there's a lot of moving pieces in there over many years that kind of muddy it for me. But when it comes down to the current frontage, I see fifty feet at the end of Grove Ave. And that hasn't passed muster in the past with us.
Even aside, even aside from the fact that arguably there's a, there's a significant gap of twenty or thirty feet from that end of that fifty foot in Grove Ave.
That doesn't particularly bother me. You know, if the pavement ends and yes, it's twenty or thirty feet. If someone was putting in a driveway, they would have to pay for that. If they were putting in utilities, they'd have to pay for that. You know, the, the, exactly who owns the middle of the street is doesn't help me. The bookbinder's own half, half of that Grove, you know, it's which would restrict the driveway is, so that it gets really muddy really fast when these, if, if these, if these, all these arguments aren't taken separately. One at a time, maybe they work, but you stick them all together and it's, uh, it's, it's a bit muddy, but you're coming.
And I think.
Or that it's coming back to that fifty feet of frontage.
And I want to be clear on that with all these arguments. They don't all fit. They, they're not all together. They, these are alternate. Essentially, I think our, our best, simplest, cleanest and the easiest correct argument is that this is a paper street. There's frontage on it. Simple as that. We've got the frontage along this paper street. The other arguments are alternatively to that, but I think that paper street established, oh, we've got much more than fifty feet.
Right. It runs the length.
Yeah, runs the length of the paper.
Paper street runs the length. Yeah. And that's why you're, so you're really hanging your hat on that case too then.
Yeah, I, I think clearly that.
Paper street that was never developed can rise to the level of front, can, can give rise to frontage that satisfies the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
And that's what that case says, and, and that case really supports our case. And, and the other arguments are essentially alternate to that. But I think if I'm looking at this correctly, it looks like there's about a hundred and fifteen feet of frontage along the paper street. And, and I think that that alone is, is all that's needed here. And these other arguments, while maybe confusing, maybe are, are certainly alternate. And I don't think any other argument that I've, I've made needs to, to matter essentially besides that first one, which I think wins. And then these other ones, if for some reason you guys disagree with me, which I think would be against that appeals court case, then I think the other arguments do also make some sense in that there is truly the access and it is a public way.
Has, has, uh, the property owner, Hanley, and then Melnick as trustee not been paying taxes on this funky shape? All that square footage of land, which is shown on the tax assessor map as belonging to that lot?
I.
And it's surveyed as part of that lot. I haven't seen any survey that shows me that hundred and fifteen feet of frontage you're talking about. I don't see any, I haven't seen that anywhere that shows me that lot five dash twelve has as, as a line across the front of it that doesn't include what used to be paper street.
Yeah, but that paper street is, 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 is our argument is still there. That's a legal, there are legal rights in that paper street.
So it was the A and R survey incorrect?
I, I don't think it, it, it supersedes, or I don't think it erases those legal rights that are exist there.
Although that's something not addressed in, in your case that you cite.
Yeah, I, I don't think this A and R plan changes anything or supersedes anybody's rights. This is simply a surveyor, I think, saying this is what I see. And, and, and we don't disagree that we own the fee in that funny shaped lot. But we also say there's also this paper street that is there and there are other rights besides just the ownership in that.
So taking your position in this case, the city has no way to police the safeness, the safety of the specifications for the installation of this access. Because you just, you can just build a house because you're, because you have frontage on a paper street that does not exist.
Well, I would say the, this isn't certainly the, you know, the, the building commissioner doesn't get to decide that there, if there is or isn't frontage. I would say that's what that case stands for is that you can't deny this building permit based on the fact that that paper street is there and that those rights are there.
So how does it get determined if the building inspector is, is forced to grant the building permit? I mean, because under this theory, there are paper streets, as you know, Joe, everywhere. People could just start building houses anywhere they want on, because, you know, on a landlocked piece of land because they have a paper street.
Well, I mean, I, I think it's similar to like a pre-existing non-conforming lot. You had those rights. They changed whatever, you know, the city changed the, the lot size therefore. And now you're, you're forty foot lot that was an approved lot. Now it should be fifty if it were a new lot, but that pre-existing non-conforming lot still has those rights. It locked in those rights and, and that's what that paper street did. It locks in rights. And now granted, the, the zoning and these, these regulations, subdivision control changes some of those things for things that happened after, but they didn't take away rights that had already been in existence at that time. They said now going forward, when somebody wants to build a new street, now they need these, these approvals and whatnot, but these old streets that were there, these paper streets that were there pre-existing, these people that had rights in these streets. You, we're not taking your rights away. I think, I think frankly, it would be really almost like a taking if the city were to say, no, we're taking this frontage away from you on this paper street, this right that you have. We're saying no.
I, I haven't seen any, any plan of the A and R. Now this is a stamped plan, stamped surveyor plan that there's, there's nothing that shows me that lot five dash twelve has a hundred and fifteen feet of frontage on a paper street. I don't see that anywhere. You haven't shown me a, a survey plan that shows me that lot five dash twelve is a school, is a rectangle.
Right. That was my idea that if we could see a plan that, that superimposed this street from the two nineteen oh eight plan on the, the final existing subdivision plan that, that you've got. So it's an interesting point, Sarah. How, how do we even know that the paper street is where you say it is?
And how does the building inspector have, could, hey, there was nothing really for him to, to even, even if he agreed that the paper street was valid frontage, there's nothing that shows me that. He had no, he didn't have that, a piece of paper in front of him that showed him that.
That's been non-conforming. When a pre-existing non-conforming asks for some new construction or building, they have to come for approval. It's not a slam dunk. You know, there's procedure, you know?
Can I just ask another question? So the other thing I think about paper streets is you alluded to it before, you own both sides. So when a paper street is not ever built and someone owns on both sides of it, then that disappears and merges into the private property, which is actually shown on the plan that you've presented. Is it's one squiggly lot that has, you know, legs in different directions? And so then where, from where are you have, where do you have frontage along that? Because you don't have it across it on, on both sides. You don't take frontage on both sides of the street. So I think there's more information that needs to be submitted about how the merger of ownership on both sides doesn't then just extinguish the paper street. And as David, you mentioned previously that many paper streets and they're out there and they're not legal frontage as we continuously interpreted until someone were to apply to the planning board for subdivision approval to actually build upon that paper street and extend it. So I think there lots of gaps about this argument that the papers, because it's a paper street, therefore it is until the end of time can be qualified for under zoning for frontage and then adequacy of access from that frontage.
That's very useful. Thank you, Carolyn. And also I also might note that on that A and R plan, there's a reference to see note one where the surveyor notes a whole bunch of plans, books and page numbers that somehow, uh, you know, gave him a clear understanding that the area of this lot is in big bold numbers, thirty thousand, four hundred seventy nine square feet. Including what had been paper streets.
I keep trying to read this decision because I, I didn't get the text of the decision till today. You know, I don't know if you want to continue, consider a continuance because a couple of points have come up. I would really like to research, digest this case and, and, and I don't know if you have other cases you want to submit or, because if this is the only one out there, I don't know, but, but, um, and then if, if we could see a plan, maybe you just don't want to go to this trouble. But if we could see the plan that's been kind of requested that showing the exact most recent currently developed or under development subdivision plan and the superimposition of this paper street from nineteen oh eight that you're talking about. I think that could be very helpful. Then maybe you don't want to do that survey work. I, I appreciate that. But I guess I'm, I'm saying that, you know, it takes unanimous decision of the board to overturn the building commissioner's decision. And would it make sense to, you know, to, to submit some more information, any other cases you can find, the survey, the, the plan that's been described rather than us taking a vote now, I guess is a question.
I guess I would add to that, that if that's a, that's a road that you want to follow, then I'm very curious about this other situation where there was a permit issued in nineteen ninety eight, but then reversed in two thousand and two with a recommendation of what the building commissioner this time has recommended. So I, I.
Or if you can get more information about that, that might be persuasive.
Anything. And maybe take the time also to talk to any of the other folks that you know, was suggested that own any of those other properties around the idea of doing the subdivision. It's, it, you know, well, I'm happy to leave that decision up to you, whether or not you want to do that and take that continuance for another, until the next hearing. And, you know, delay our final decision. I, I think there are three of us that have to come to that. Maybe, maybe not, but I'm, you know, if that's something that you'd want to do, I'm happy to go with that. Cause I like David, I've been trying to run back and forth to read the decision and it's just, it's not getting in there. So.
And I realize that's more passage of time, but I, but I think if we were, I mean, you can kind of read the writing on the wall. If, if we have to make a decision now, I'm not sure it would be the one that you want. So we're, we're trying to sort of be helpful in a way.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I think that the, the, you know, like I said, I, I think the the paper street thing is, is there and that case supports that. You know, I don't know if I do submit other things. I think it's, we've got to have another hearing at that point. I'm not sure if.
When could that be Carolyn? That, that, I guess, it would be the second, the second Thursday in June.
Yeah, a June tenth. I am not available the twenty fourth, but you had, you have June tenth and it's open right now. Um, so that was another thing that I think we need to discuss was your summer schedule tonight. Because July and August obviously come after the June tenth meeting. So we need to figure that out. But if June tenth isn't enough time, you know, I would say push it to July.
Would June tenth give you enough time for notices?
I don't think it has to be re-noticed, right? Because.
No, it's a, you continue it to a date time certain tonight and there's no note, notice requirement.
Think we may have another.
Pat, Pat Melnick, sorry. My, my name is Pat Melnick Jr. My name's wrong in a thing. I, I can just tell you that if, if it'd be helpful to you to see where, where the Grove Avenue, the, the Washington Heights plan was superimposed onto a current map. I can tell you, we can, we can do that. We can get that to you if that's helpful, but as, as far as your other requests, I, I don't think there's going to be anything else we're going to be offering. The case that we're relying on has been submitted. And, um, uh, you know, the, what happened between the, uh, what was it? Uh, nineteen ninety eight and two thousand and two, like, I've already looked into it and I honestly, I can't find any reason for it, why they denied it the second time after they approved it the first time. So like I said, if it would be helpful to see the Grove Avenue, the Washington Heights plan laid out over the existing.
And path that would enable, I just want to read the damn case. I've been trying to read it through the whole, and I know it's not that long, but you know what I mean? It's, it's such a critical case for you that I, I'd like to be able to focus on it.
I have no problem with, with it going to another date. It's, it's, I guess what you want from us, it's, uh, I can get, I can get you that. That's not a problem, but the other requests, I don't think will be helpful.
So the two things, so, I mean, it's your, it's your, your decision if you want to just ask us for continuance. It clearly will agree, will agree to it. But to me, the two benefits, so we could see that plan that people have been asking for, so we can visualize where this paper street is. And so we can focus on that case and maybe some of us can do some of our own digging to see if we see anything else out there relating to that case to confirm that in our mind, if that case is as definitive as, as, as you feel that it is.
That'd be fine. We, well, we, we would be happy to go. That'd be fine. We, we would be happy to go to, we asked her, you know, one more date then to take a look at those things. June 10th and maybe.
So at 5:30, I mean, you don't have anything scheduled right now. So you can put it up 5:30.
I better, let me, I'm just checking my calendar, June 10th after all that. Sorry. Everyone else okay? June 10th. I'm calling up my calendar.
Yes. And I think if we start going beyond, then we're going to run into vacation issues. And I think that, that could be a problem. So.
Yeah, I can do, I can do June 10th. I'm not sure. I bet the appellate doesn't want to wait past then either.
I think two weeks is fine.
Okay. So, so I take it that that's a request for a continuance.
Our request for a continuous to June 10th. Yeah.
Okay. And I get, and I think Carolyn, we need a motion and then a, a roll call vote.
All right. So I moved to continue this hearing until June 10th at 5:30.
I'm here. Second, a second.
Second.
Okay. And then I, do we need a, we need a roll call because it's virtual, right, Carolyn?
Yep. So Elizabeth Silver?
Yes.
Sarah Norther?
Yes.
David Bloomberg?
Yes.
And does that work for you as well, Maureen? Just in case something comes up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, so we'll, and then Carolyn, you can communicate with Joe about, I mean, if there are any further communications between Carolyn and Joe.
Right. And I'll, I, right. And so in the intervening time, no contact between the applicant and the board members or the members of the public, that would be considered ex parte contact. So you, you, you know, any, everything about this permit application or appeal, I should say, has to be discussed in the context of the public hearing.
Right. So no discussion among any board members or what you just said. Thank you. Okay. So, so I think we can let these folks go.
Can I ask a question? The person who spoke, whose name looks like Torin, you didn't identify yourself and I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't know who you are. It's clear that some other folks did.
I'm Pat Melnick Jr.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's enough. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
We'll talk to you again. To the board, I need to run. Is there anything urgent that we have to do right now?
Um, I just want to throw out summer schedule. We don't have to do it now. We can just, if you think about it, if you could email me and let me know second or fourth Thursdays through July and August. I actually just realized that I'm going to be away the fourth Thursday of July. So I don't know if you want to do like the first meeting in June, first meeting in July, first meeting in August, or I don't know if that works with your schedules. So I'm just throwing that out there if you could think about it. And if you have to leave and then just email me, that's fine.
Yeah, I know that. Send that by email?
Yeah, we can do this by email. Yeah. And then it sounds like we've chosen the first day of June, but, um, available. And then do we just need a motion? I think that's probably a motion to just to adjourn.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Second.
Roll call.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Maureen?
You sure? Yes.
And David?
Yep. Yes.